We have come to order. Uh, alright. We have a bunch of minutes that I sent in that I... Actually aren't attached here, but did you get a chance?
Yeah, I looked at them. I can remember the dates. I've got them all going through. I don't know if you have the dates.
Oh, I can look it up. Yeah. They were the minutes for, uh... Let's see, August 29th, September 19th, September 26th, and October 17th.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Well, seconded up. All in favor? Cool. So, let's get to the first thing on... Do you want to do these rules things first, or do we want to talk about the special municipal employees first?
I guess you're here for the rules, man. I was here for the attorney request opinion.
Right. Oh, cool. Alright, so let's start with that one, huh? Uh, so that was Dan sent that, and he had stated at the full council, and again in an email, that his rationale for doing this is that he wants to... Or he's worried that the budget could... The budget needs to be kept in control, and since for most, um... You know, executive departments of the city, like if you wanted to get something reviewed, you'd have to go through the department head, that he believed that we should probably do the same and have the city council president sign off on that. He... I know that he initially got some pushback from Omar about that, about, "Well, what happens if there's something that is actually like a pretty good idea, but for whatever reason, there's like a bad relationship between some future city council president and a counselor? Is there any way to go around that?" So Dan, um, had sent in... I don't know if it made it into this packet. He had sent in a proposed change to his language, um, which I will pull up right now. You can see this.
Did he send that to the entire... to the committee?
I think he just sent it to the committee, yeah.
I didn't get one. Not on your committee.
So, yeah, he just added the language, and you can look at this, but the language reads, "Should the president not allow the request, the full council may override the president with a majority vote and allow the request to proceed." So, uh... What do people think about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to have some sort of oversight versus individual councils, maybe contacting the lawyer, this and that. So I think I'm fine with that. And I had thought about that scenario, like let's say the mayor and the city council president had their own agenda or whatever. They could, you know, that city council president could block something that was really important, a legal decision, maybe even, you know, a conflict between executive and legislative branches. And so I think there should be some kind of override. Although the big question, so 'cause I very rarely mention it, Nicole said, "Where's the money got come from?" I mean, like, it's all... I don't think that's been answered, because we have no budget for the...
Right.
We completely are dependent upon her saying, "Okay." And not that she's saying... Not that she's saying, "I wouldn't say it's okay if the majority of the council felt a needed opinion between here and there."
But it might not be something that necessarily we even have a budget. Like, it might require supplemental appropriation depending on...
And she would have to say, "Yeah." I mean, I don't think we can't... I don't think we could, even from... I don't think there's any financial source we could take the money from and say, without her approval.
Yeah. I mean, truth be told, if we had unlimited amounts of money, I'd prefer for the council to have its own, like, its own solicitor separate from... Just because there are occasionally times where the mayor and the council might not agree on something, and whatever the solicitor's brought into it. I think that most solicitors will always do what's best to give a good and honest opinion, but at the end of the day, they work for the mayor.
Who signs their check. Yeah, and when Mark Tenon was here, we specifically asked that question. You know, he very smartly answered, "I don't make my decisions based on the person asking you. I make my decision based on the law and how I interpret it."
Sure.
But it's based on the way the question is asked.
Right.
And if the mayor asks the question, then the question is answered. And you can ask any question and get kind of direct... It starts to shape the answer that you get. And so therefore, I see... I agree with you, Tom, that there's this balance between the legislative and the executive. And then you get to the council level, and I have to support Omar in this. You can get to a situation where there may be two or three counselors who think, "I'd like to hear an opinion on this, and here's the question I would like answered." And it may not agree. I know you're in the seat now, and I'm not looking at you that way. You've been the president so often. And whether it be Dan, or whether it was Joy, whoever was the president, may not agree. There may be a conflict, not a conflict, but not agreement.
Come on in.
No, that was me. That was me knocking on this door as we... So, I'd like to try to figure out a way that we... If we could in some way, to kind of leave it a little more open than having a majority. Because although that's a compromise from saying there's autocratic rule by whoever is sitting in the position of president of the council, there may not be a formulated opinion on a subject, and someone may have some very good arguments about something and want to explore it further legally to get some clarifications. And yet not... How do we have that be available to Omar or two or three counselors?
Well, as I said, I would think if there are two or three of you, if your argument is legitimate, you should be able to convince two or three other counselors. You know, I mean, if you can't, if you have two of you, and you can't convince five other people, you know, two or three other people that this is legitimate, you know...
I don't... I don't know where the line gets drawn, whether it be a majority or whether...
Yeah. I mean, and the other thing is like, I think like, when I think about these sorts of balance of power issues, what I always have to think is like, am I thinking about this in the context of East Hampton? Because I could look at a bunch of other municipalities that are not...
Have you seen property? I mean, not home safety? They are behind city council in this conference room.
I'm like, "Where are they?" Can't find them.
Funny.
So, like, I could look at some other municipalities, like, not really that far away, where you potentially would have like very intense factionalism during some period of time, and where there might be four people who are sort of in one faction that actually might be totally right about something, but gets shot down. So, I mean, right, any... I mean, I guess, this is one of those ones where I feel like there's no right answer here, because the more that we restrict the ability of some rogue counselor to just run out our budget, the more that we also restrict the ability of some counselors totally right to get the legal advice that they need. But both are important, so...
And that's why I think, I think if it's truly real and right, and then you should be able to convince a majority. 'Cause I mean, you know, as you argue, you could have, you know, the crooked city president or whatever, you could have the two city counselors who also have a separate agenda.
Right.
So you could have wrong reasons on your side. So that's why I say a majority is a good thing. You know, it's like, if you could convince five of your counselors that this is significant enough that needs a legal opinion that the president doesn't agree with, then I think it should go forward.
When we say approve, is... What the policy now is kind of amorphous. Sometimes we... I mean, it could make sense to consult with the president and inform the president of a request forthcoming, because then it may have been a question that was answered before.
Right.
The president may have an... Jeez, we gotta look at it. With the city clerk, for example, in property, how do you sell property for the city? If there's a parcel of land and you sell? Well, we don't have to invent the wheel by getting a new opinion. We can go to the opinions of the existing law and then see if anything's changed in the meantime with the state law. And it's all there. So that makes sense to consult, to require consultation of the president. Require the approval of the president? I don't know. I just have some reservations about him. We would be reluctant.
I can see it both ways. I mean, I do sort of feel like, as long as the majority of counselor... I mean, well, so right now, is there any formal process? 'Cause we don't vote to ask the city solicitor to do...
No, we try to restrain from doing it, because we don't want to spend darn money.
We don't...
And then we want to collaborate as much as we can, utilize the services of the president, and talk to the mayor about any issues that there may be. But sometimes, there's even the strong factionalism or the legislative.
Right. I mean, yes, 'cause there's some things that you have to go to the city solicitor.
Oh, yeah, and the ordinances, and as Jake mentioned. So, and those are no brainer. No one's gonna say no.
And you have to.
You know, and the mayor wouldn't say no, 'cause again, she wants, you know... I think 99% of the time, we're all gonna be on the same page. I'm just looking... We're just looking for that 1% where...
So let's say it's a controversial ordinance. And you want... And those who are promoting the ordinance want to be sure that they get it right.
Oh, yeah. I mean, any kind of ordinance, I wouldn't even blink it.
Don't our rules... But wait, don't our rules require that ordinances get bounced off the city solicitor?
I don't know if it requires it.
There's... Oh, man.
No, I don't have it...
I think it's generally a good practice.
There's certain sorts of business that require a city solicitor's review. I'm blanking.
Well, we wouldn't be asking about those, would we?
Right, sure.
And yet we'd want to be respectful of the budget, so I get that. I just would object to approve. I would say submit it to the council president.
Do you move for it?
And submit it to and consulted with. That makes sense. But then that doesn't leave...
But what if...
Doesn't leave the force that, I think, to control a rogue counselor who would be going out and spending money all the time.
No, I guess that's it. I mean, that's why... And then I... And that's why, I mean, I don't want... 'Cause he's like, not even... It's not always me. It's in different personalities, but I mean, I think 99% of these times, it's not gonna be a problem. Now, is there one situation where someone says, "You know, we don't need to know that, or that's not council business, that's planning, or let them have it." You know, then I think they should be able to say, "No, 'cause we're gonna end up duplicating legal analysis if we do it," you know, so... But I mean, that's why I like that. But if the majority of the council feels, "No, we need this," then... But I mean, 'cause I think they're... Yeah, I mean, 'cause if the council president can't approve it or disapprove it or say no, then it means it can be done.
Well, let's say that we would go ahead and say the council president has the authority to say no, but four counselors have the opportunity to override.
Wouldn't you feel better if a majority? I mean...
I think there are some... There are some minority opinions that don't get off the ground.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't know, Tom?
Sorry, I was trying to find the, like, the section. It might actually be in the charter. There is something somewhere that I've read about things that require the city solicitor. The reason why I was checking is that I want to make sure that we don't end up in a situation ever where like, where some crucial step in, like, that's normal could ever be blocked.
Well, if you would say that...
Well, I guess it doesn't...
The council president could say no, then the ordinance could be stopped.
Yeah, unless you sort of...
Under the way it's written, if an ordinance is proposed, it looks like there's gonna be a majority that's gonna pass it.
Well, if there's... If the council says no, then the council votes yes.
Yes, to do the opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that still requires that... It wouldn't take a legal opinion to say, "Yeah," you know, you can't... Let's say, let's say you...
Hey, no, I know.
The president of the council says, "I don't want to do this," and four counselors say, "Jeez, I think this is great for the city, and we should have this particular plan." But the other five counselors, including the president, says, "Hey, uh, I don't think it's legal the way it is, and there are five of us that don't think it's legal." And it... Or it isn't appropriate for some legal reason. And the other four say, "I think that's totally mistaken. I'd like to get my solicitor to answer that question for us." Well, you're not gonna, because I'm with the five, and you're with the four, and that's just the way it is. And then you end up with a blocking where a legal opinion could be very helpful in clarifying whether you should or could move forward. And in fact, a fifth or a sixth vote might come on board, because the question gets asked, and then the answer is, "Yes, you can do this."
I mean, for me to vote down, like, me as personally as a counselor, to say like, "No, we shouldn't ask the lawyer about it," it would have to be like... I mean, I guess somebody could do that to try and shut something down that they think might... They might be right, and I don't want to know. But I would have a hard time, like, if I thought that there was any chance that the law was not on my side, I'd always want to know that now rather than later, once the law has been enacted, and then something goes to court, and it gets struck down, and I look like a dummy. So, I might... I like... I hear what you're saying. I'm just like... And I do like... I always do worry about like, any rule that could sort of be obscurely used to stop something from happening, but also, um... I just don't... I don't know. I don't really see it. I do think, I wouldn't mind continuing this, A, so that Counselor Rest has a chance to weigh in if it's gonna be like a public conversation, and B, because I just want to take a minute to like actually review what the circumstances are where...
Is there an urgency to move this one?
I don't think so. So I don't see why we can't continue it. I mean, and just address it later, but I just want to do a little bit of research about... And some of that actually might be just asking you some questions, Joe, about like, when we end up actually using that, and what the current procedure, if any, is.
Yeah, I think the only time it came up is like, if you have a committee who... Committee chair was sending an email to the city solicitor about this thing, and then someone else sends a very similar question about the same thing. Just to prevent there being multiple questions that are very similar asked versus, you know, consolidating it, or having the chair of that person be directing, so, you know... It's just trying to make sure that any counselor doesn't go, "I can just send off..." Jacking or, "I can just send off an email and ask." No, you know, we need... There needs to be some idea that every question that pops into your head can't ask for a legal opinion on, because...
Right. And there has to be some sort of... I mean, I don't really... Frankly, I don't really mind the majority piece right here, because like, that suggests that this couldn't be used to sort of block a vote that would have passed. Right? So to me, the only time... The only time that I could ever see this being a problem is if the majority of the council was doing something that... Or was in support of something, that there was some sort of legal reason they shouldn't be, and that important information didn't come to light, because the majority of the council didn't really want to hear it. I don't see that in the council.
No, I mean, to say, we never... I guess we're just trying to think ahead, what could be...
Right. And I gotta have to say, I think you've balanced opposing opinions very well as president, in terms of taking, being cognizant of those opinions, and respectful of everyone at any time. So I felt very comfortable with your presidency. So it's not that... It's just...
Yeah, oh, no, I know. I'm here too. I understand exactly what's going on, yeah, so...
The other broader question, a little bit off this particular topic, is, should the council have a budget that includes some money for legal opinion? Should there be a...
I mean, all we can do is request...
A difference with the executive.
Yeah.
Just a thought, because that... And it goes with this kind of thinking, I think, so...
I mean, look, if we had, like, I mean, if we had all the money in the world, or even... Like, then yes, I absolutely would want that, with the current amount of money. I don't know. I actually, like, I don't know, like, if we did that, then like some other thing in the budget would have to not happen, and so I don't know.
And again, you know, we could always request it, but the mayor may say, you know... Or then it's like, it almost hurts us, because right now, we share this pot of money, and if we have, we give ourselves $5,000, it's like...
It's like, "Sorry, you're all out of it." Yeah, I hear you.
It could be a problem. If you're gonna continue, I guess I'll have time to think about it.
Yeah, I just think, I want to... First of all, I'd like Counselors as an author to have the opportunity to weigh in, but also...
Who is it tonight?
Uh, yeah, there was a death in this family. It's down in Pennsylvania, so... But, yeah, okay, so...
Continue that. Thank you.
And that was that. Let's go to Rule 8B. That's my suggestion.
Before you do, if there was any further discussion on 41C and a half, when that's gonna be moving forward for discussion with parties?
We keep bouncing around. Today, they suggested the 28th through the 29th, but neither of those days worked for all of us. I'm gonna send an email. I just can't really do this one at work.
No, no, I understand. I just didn't know if there was any...
I think I'm gonna take...
Would you let me know specifically?
Sure, yeah. I think this is what I'm gonna shoot for, February 7th. We'll see if that works.
Thank you.
'Cause they want me at 5:00 PM, and that is kind of tricky for me, 'cause I work at Hattie's, so... But, yeah...
Thursdays, you're working from home?
Thursdays, I work from home, so I try to come 31st. But it has me a Thursday with no charter review, 'cause that's not gonna work. So...
I'll see you later.
See you, JP. I mean, I could just work from home a different day, but... Oh, Wednesday's also doing it, so it's all... Cool. So, 8B. You were there when we had our chat about this particular... Or about in the charter, the 211C.
Yep.
And what I realized is that our rules very clearly state that a majority vote is required to do anything on the city council. And that is normally fine, because normally we vote things up or down. But, or at least a majority was required for these kinds of things. What I ran into, what I thought was tricky was what happens if one of us precinct counselors? Me, for instance. What if something were to happen to me, and I'm no longer on the council? Well, no... I had no opponent, and there was no at-large candidate in three, so there's no one to replace me. Council has to choose somebody. What if we get five people who are interested, and support for them is broken up among the council?
Right, now we have an even number of counselors to...
Yeah, eight counselors, I mean. Right. So, um, you actually suggested, or what, what if we use ranked choice vote? So I wrote up a thing that would do that, and, you know, the basic idea is that... Let's see. You know, in these sorts of circumstances where there's potentially more people... And I also realize that this could just as easily happen with a city council president election or a vice president election, if three or more counselors wanted to beat that position.
'Cause we've had... It's funny, you mentioned, 'cause we have had instances where, because of Salem's teaching, he hasn't been at that election. And typically, the way in which you've experienced it, Dan and I, so the president tends to go, it all tends to be votes tabbed late before the meeting, so that, you know, and usually once one candidate knows, "Okay, I have the five votes," then the other person says, "Okay, you got the five votes, so we'll all vote together and look like nine votes sold for one person."
Right.
But, you know, we've had situations where Salem wasn't there, and if it had been a scenario where somebody said, "No, I want..." It could very easily be four-four, you know? Although they'd probably wait till Salem or whatever.
Right. So the basic idea here is that, you know, in these cases, what we do is we say, we'll go around and say, "Oh, I'll nominate John McQuillan as the second." Someone else says, "Oh, I'm gonna nominate someone else." And once everyone's had the opportunity to nominate or second people, then the... If there's more than two people, then the idea is that each person is to take a vote and rank their preferences for these candidates. The city clerk will record those votes. So that'll allow for the possibility of a situation where you can use the sort of ranked choice situation to, you know, eliminate whoever gets the least votes, and then that person gets... It gets transferred over. And also, I put something in there saying, in the case that... Say that it's a three-way tie, then the idea is that you would count the second choice votes to see, like, okay, well... And then whoever got the most of those combined votes would be the... Or whoever got the least of those combined votes would get eliminated.
So, and let's say there were four people running for your... Or have been nominated for your open seat.
Right.
Would the number one candidate have to get five votes on city council? And if they didn't, then you would go to the second? How does that work, do you know?
Right. So, oh, yeah, that is... The tricky thing is right there, but, yeah, so they would need to get five votes to be confirmed, 'cause they need a majority. If they didn't, and because it was split up among a bunch of people, and it's easy, if it's like a four-and-four tie, then the idea is that you...
What if it was... Okay, that's right, you have to do the math. It could be, so it was four, three, two, one.
Okay.
Does that four still win, or does he need to have five?
No, what happens is that the one gets eliminated. Whoever voted for the one, their vote gets moved over to whoever their second choice was.
Okay.
And then you figure out who's the last place after that. You know, if that... If that... If the one... If the person's second choice was the four, then the four... That person becomes a five, and they win. If not, there's an additional round after that, and...
And I know, and I can remember which email it was, Dan was saying, you know, "Actually, I'm thinking more like..." 'Cause if we could just go through a series of runoffs, well, that's the same thing as ranking choice voting. It's just another variation of it.
Right, and this was the thing, is that what I realized is that I think under our current system, what would happen is that we would ta... And this happens fairly frequently in these sorts of elections, is we take the vote, no one would get a majority, so then we'd just have to revote.
Yeah.
But that requires somebody to bend, finally. And I think that more productive than somebody just bending is that we say...
Who, yeah?
Yeah, well, okay. You, like, you, this one person, like, you have the... Like, that person was the least support, so out of their supporters, who would they like? Who could they handle, deal with?
'Cause it's really, in that situation, there's only one ballot, right? 'Cause it's just like, okay, that person made it, you're in. Okay, it fell short, let's eliminate number one, let's recalculate it, now you made it, now you didn't. Whereas these other scenarios, Dan mentioned, it's a series of another ballot. And again, and then it comes to the persuasion, what, you know...
Right, yeah. So, I mean, I think it's a good way to do it. I think it leads to situations where the people who get elected, the people who... The most people can come together around. And it probably will never happen, but it would be such a mess if at the start of a new term, particularly, or after, or in the wake of some sort of tragedy, like, we suddenly find ourselves at this sort of constitutional crisis, so...
I mean, I like it, again, and I think it has... Now, you know, it must've been, I haven't read that article that you responded to yet, but I mean, I think it has promise, and certainly Maine has adopted it and stuff, and so I think it, you know, it's a nice... Maine has adopted it and stuff, and so I think it, you know, it's a nice kind of toehold to this part of our city, we're adopting it, and maybe we haven't used it, but again, it's part of the educational process, people say, what is that, what'd they just do, and they may look into it a little more and learn more about it. Now, do you want, I mean, I think, should we vote on this tonight, or since we are holding off, and, or should we also hold off and have Dan here for this one?
I mean, he voiced his, his views on this, but I guess the one difference is that since that one was his thing, there was a lot of feedback, and I wanted to give him a chance to respond, but I'd be comfortable moving on this. So I'll make a motion that we adopt a rule, this new rule 8B for elections, if council officers in other special circumstances, all those in favor?
Aye.
Cool. And lastly, we have our special municipal employee situation. So, I've sent a bunch of stuff. Okay, so, ooh, interesting. All right, so, basically, the situation with the special municipal employees is that anyone who's a member of any of these committees, if they're not made a special municipal employee, is bound up with like conflict of interest law, and as a result, someone who, for like a lawyer who wanted to volunteer on the council of aging, couldn't represent a client before the planning board. So, we spoke about this at length at the last meeting, we had two questions. One of them was, we wanted Mayor LaChapelle to have an opportunity to come and, or to look this over and see, like, especially in light of the whole thing that she's doing at the Collins Center, whether there was any of this that didn't seem appropriate, like, oh, man, that person really actually should be held to this. She sent an email back saying, she's fucked it, so I don't think there's any of that. The other thing is, I wanted to see if there was a way that we could not have to do this in this sort of, like, if there is something that we could write that would broadly state which employees were municipal employees and which ones were not, and that looks like that's not going to be possible. They, you need to take a specific vote on the specific people in that committee, so.
When I can't even do something like this, it has to be.
Well, no, we can do that, but we couldn't say, I move that all members of volunteer multi-member boards, like, you have to take, you need to specify in the motion. So my strong recommendation going forward is that if by ordinance, we either approve or establish a new multi-member board that we, in the ordinance, just write, and all members of this board shall be special municipal employees.
Somebody to add to it.
Yeah, if, I mean, if not, then we just need to catch it and take another vote, it's not a big deal, but it would be a shame if somebody ended up on something like this with the assumption that they were, and then they weren't, so.
But if you had a lawyer on the planning board, and his client wanted to go in from the planning board, that's still.
That's still not okay.
It's just like something allows them, okay.
But, you know, if you had a lawyer on the planning board, and they wanted to break something up with the historical commission.
Right.
So, okay, Barb sent me this whole thing and said, please discuss these. The sealer of weights and measures is now being shared with Northampton, the veterans' agent is also a shared position. I don't see why that is an issue. The electro, electric and gas slash plumbing inspectors are paid appointed positions.
I always think that's relevant, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the fact that they're paid, I mean, the assessors are paid. So, um, yeah, okay, and the burial agent duties are authorized by the Board of Health and Assistant, so it's part of their job, it's not a separate position, so we can probably.
You're moving burial workers?
And the tree warden is a position within Parks and Rec, so they wouldn't probably be a special municipal employee.
Well, it's on there, so they would be covered by that, right?
Oh, yeah, well, that's the Parks and Rec commission.
Oh.
Yeah, I guess the tree warden, if that's a position within Parks and Rec, then I think that just makes them a standard municipal employee, unless maybe it's something where it's a super part-time position and they might have other business. But I guess in the past, they were assigned as a special municipal employee. I'm fine keeping them on there for now and, because like, they currently aren't designated as a special municipal employee. I don't actually know much about the tree warden position.
Yeah, at least, again, at least, I think that likelihood of these conflicts arising with some of these positions are like nil, you know, because it is, it is, it's going to be mainly lawyers, right, that they would be arguing, or what scenarios, would there be where there could be?
Maybe there's a situation if you've got a, okay, say you've got a plumbing inspector, maybe they might have some other business, like, they're probably not their sole job, so maybe as a plumber, they have a little, they do some work and they want to bid on something related to the city, but they don't want to be a conflict of interest, I don't know.
I mean, that would even be tough, right? I mean, if you're the plumbing agent, you're going to approve some.
Oh, wait, yeah, that actually wouldn't even make sense, but, yeah, I don't know how any of these would even come up, like, what sorts of conflicts there, but I also don't, I don't really understand the nature of those positions well enough to know what kind of things that would come up.
I mean, is there, so according to Nicole, there was no reason why these plumbing and gas was left off specifically, I mean, it's.
Right, so these, okay, these used to be one big list, and I asked Barb to split it into two for the purpose of making a motion, so that I can say, I move blah, 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 that all members of the following boards, committees and commissions, and then I move that the city is to this following positions, because these are specific positions, rather, because you need to say, like, so the member of these boards.
Yeah, I see.
Because you need to, like, specifically specify, so I had them split up like that, but if, these are all people, I mean, other than, there's a couple new boards on here, but really, most of this is just renewing things. It hasn't been an issue for us to have the tree warden as a special municipal employee up to this point, so I don't see the reason why we.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
All right, well, then, I move that we move that, that work forward.
Do you want to read it?
Yeah, so, right, I move that we recommend to the council that in accordance with MGL Chapter 26 8A, the city of East Hampton assigns special municipal employee status to all members of the following boards, committees and commissions, Board of Assessor, Board of Health, Board of Public Works, Board of Registers of Voters, Charity Funds, Income Distribution Committee, Commission on Disability, Community Preservation Act Committee, Community Relations Committee, Conservation Commission, Contributory Retirement Board, Council on Aging, East Hampton City Arts Plus, ECA Grants Committee, AKA Cultural Council, Economic Development and Industry Committee, Energy Advisory Committee, Historical Commission, Housing Authority, Licensing Board, Main Street Cemetery Commission, Manhan Rail Trail Committee, National Sonic Pond Committee, Parks and Rec Committee, Planning Board, School Building Committee, Telecom Advisory Committee, Veterans Council and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
And then, I also move that we recommend that the council approve in accordance with, that in accordance with MGL Chapter 26 8A, the city of council assigns special municipal employee status to the following positions, caretaker of soldiers' and sailors' grave, veteran agent, electrical inspector, tree warden, plumbing and gas inspector, sealers of weights and measures.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe that is all that we have for tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.